So that a minute.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to meeting number eight, May first, 2023 of the South River Mayor and Borough Council. This meeting is hereby called to order. May we have the statement of notice of publication? Madam Clerk?
In compliance with chapter two thirty-one of public law of nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, or remotely via Zoom has been published in the Home News Tribune on January sixth, twenty twenty-three, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, the borough website, and the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River.
Thank you. Call of roll.
Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Gindy?
Here.
Councilman Gerchinsky? Councilwoman Mira?
Here.
Councilman Olivera?
Here.
Council President Siula?
Here.
Councilman Gerchinsky will be absent tonight. Please stand.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. People are in a hurry tonight. There's a hockey game. All right then. That's it. No proclamations on our awards and presentations. We do have new business concerning the authorized reading of the twenty twenty-three budget by title only. And then, of course, we have to have the hearing on that also. Remind me, Mr. Zanga, how are we going to do this?
The resolution for read by title only.
Okay.
We'll approve it and then we'll open up the public hearing.
All right then. Madam Clerk?
Resolution twenty twenty-three one fifty-five, resolution to be read, to read budget by title only. Whereas NJSA forty A colon four dash A provides that the budget be read by title only at the time of the public hearing if a resolution is passed by not less than a majority of the full governing body, providing that at least one week prior to the date of the hearing, a complete copy of the approved budget as advertised has been posted in town hall and copies have been made available by the clerk to persons requiring them. And whereas these two conditions have been met, now therefore be it resolved that the budget shall be read by title only.
Your pleasure on the resolution. Resolution has been moved by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mr. Olivera. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
Very good. We will now open this up to the public. You can come forward if you have any questions concerning the budget. You may come ask. I'm also going to do something a little bit different. I know there is a number of people who want to come forward and talk about their water conditions. And I'm also going to open it up to that also. And the reason is because although this is the budget, fixing our water problems costs money, and that's in our budget. And so we have our experts here who can answer your questions. So please, if you have anything to say about the budget, you can come forward. Or if you have anything to say about the water, please come forward.
Sandra. Good evening. Sandra Delino, Nine Woodlawn Avenue, South River. So many concerns about the water. Um, lately, it's, it's not even how dirty it is, but the filth that comes out of the drain. You can't take a bath. It's so dangerous. My white sheets are all brown. My white towels are all brown. It's to a point where something has to be done. Our failing infrastructure needs to be looked at. Is it going to cost billions? No. It'll cost millions. But are there grants? Has anyone applied for grants? Has anyone reached out? I just want to know, what have you guys done? And I'm sure I'm not the only one that's commented on this. I'm not going to go to Facebook and comment on it, but I think that it's an issue that needs to be addressed. I think it's something for the health of our residents. And it's, it's a concern. I'm concerned. I don't even give my dogs tap water because every time I fill the bowl, it turns brown by the end of the day, and it has these little particles inside of it. So I, spending extra money on bottled water a week, that's not cheap. That's, you know, it's not cheap. The water rates went up, so we're paying more for water. Our taxes are increased. And yet, as a taxpaying resident, I can't get clean water. So can you please look into our infrastructure? Look into something. Look into grants. Look into something to better the life of our residents because they, they really need this. We need this. Y'all need this.
Okay. Now, few questions. Where is Woodlawn in terms of South River?
On the corner of Prospect and Northern.
Okay, so we know where it is.
Of Burton.
It's in the northern part of the town. Okay.
No hydrant flushing there. It wasn't an issue with the hydrants, so that wouldn't be an excuse.
Okay. Is this something that is, has occurred in the past week, two weeks, three weeks? It's continuous?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And I'll tell you that because four months ago, I bought these really nice water containers at TJ Maxx. I threw them all out, and they weren't cheap because they were all brown on the inside.
Okay. All right then. Thank you.
Anyone else? Has anyone applied for grants or looked into grants?
Well, we're going to be responding to that, into doing that. I've got written it down. Grants. I want a few other things to be noted also.
So another question, if I still have time. Is this, with the grants and the water, is this part of the new utility department or no?
That, that hasn't been set up yet.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
I didn't come here to talk about this, but me in is here. I'm going to talk. A question I got is what's causing?
Your name and address.
Ronald Luke, eighty-five Darrell Street.
And where is Darrell Street?
I'm on the corner of Virginia and Darrell, right down the street from Daily Pond.
Okay, good. Now we know where you are in this, and so please.
Uh, unlike the young lady, my water has been getting browned, then cleared, then brown. Evidently, it's about the flushing. What is creating the brown? That's what I'm asking. It's like when they do the flushing, they reduce the pressure on the pipes, and here come the brown. So, and, and like her, I don't use the water to cook. I don't even give it to the cat. So my question again is, where is the brown coming from?
And how often does this occur? Is this in the past week, two weeks, three weeks?
It's off and on. Actually, it's never solid, but it'll last two, three days, and then it stops. And, and I'm ninety percent sure it happens about the flushing, when y'all flush the hydrants. I can't say that's a bad thing. My only question is, where is it coming from? Is it rusted pipes? Is it dirt? Is it, what is it? Is it something, I'm going to say like this, is it something that we got to worry about in the future? Like they put on this, this thing on the Facebook, Camp Lejeune? Do we have to worry about that? Is it something that happened later on? So I mean, I just, I need to back this young lady up and speak my piece too.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else about the water or about the budget?
Jim Hutchison, thirty-eight Virginia Street. I live across the street from Ron. So again, corner of Virginia and Darrell, right down from Daily's Pond. Just to comment on the water, to give you a little bit more information too. We, we had brown water right after the fire on Thomas Street for a few days. And since the flushing began, it's been off and on for the past about week or so. Again, it cleared up in the last two days, at least at my residence. But it was a couple of days where, again, from the flushing, from, you know, turbidity and so forth in the water, that all, that all took place. But it's been off and on since the fire on Thomas Street.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? First call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mr. Siula to close. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Okay. During our discussion, we will answer these questions. The next step is to adopt the budget?
Yes.
Okay, then. Please read the resolution.
Be it resolved by the council members of the borough, South River, County of Middlesex, that the budget here and for set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated of the sun, of the sums there and set forth as appropriations and authorization of the amount of eleven million, one hundred and six thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and eight cents for municipal purposes.
I'd like to waive the full reading.
Motion has been made by Mr. Olivera to waive the full reading. Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Your pleasure on the resolution.
Move the resolution.
The resolution has been moved by Mr. Siula.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ballas. We now have lots to discuss. Okay. Um, nobody came to practically talk about the budget, but brown water. Okay. I believe we have Mr. Lundenski, someone from?
Hold on, you have one more.
We have one more resolution?
Yeah, the self-examination.
It was a separate resolution?
It is. It is.
Vote on this one.
Okay.
This gives permission for me to certify that that term is paid or that stuff.
They have to vote on the resolution to adopt the budget first?
Yeah.
And then we have to?
Then we can.
Self-review, and then we'll have the discussion on the water.
All right. Are there any discussions on the budget?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Um, how much more money did we put in this year for infrastructure?
As to infrastructure, as to what?
Our water infrastructure, water main breaks, repairs, roads.
There's a hundred thousand in capital outlay, and we also did the bond ordinance in December two thousand twenty-two for five hundred thousand. We anticipate doing another bond ordinance this year also for water repairs.
So we have six hundred thousand dollars for infrastructure this year?
Another five hundred thousand. We plan on doing a bond ordinance this year. So about one point one million.
I know that.
For anything in specific?
Usually water main repairs, hydrants, valves. Plus, we do charge to the regular operating budget also, water operating, certain expenses. If we get certain smaller expenses for the treatment plant stuff, just go right to regular operating.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, please.
So first and foremost, I want to thank the Budget Committee for working on the budget. I know you guys worked hard on it. You know, the budget looks good, but my biggest issue that I have is, I know, Joe, you just mentioned everything in terms of what we have. It's we continue to be reactive instead of proactive, right? And I think one of the mindsets that we really have to figure out, you know, we've all sat up here and everyone blames everyone. But I think the buck really needs to stop, and we need to figure out what the problem is. I know Councilwoman, Councilwoman Mara mentioned potentially lining the pipes. We don't know what it takes, what it costs. We, we don't know anything. So I would really like for us to commit to something in terms of what's a plan? What pipes need to be replaced? Have they been scoped? I know that's going to cost money, but at least it gives us a starting point to see where we're at and what we need to do. I think right now we're just flying off the seat of our, our pants and just figuring out, okay, this broke, we're going to replace it. But as we all know, the moment you replace something, it's going to break down the road something else. We're going to have Main Street opening up. I know, Art, we spoke about that. There's rules to that, but if I'm not mistaken, the county, after, if we open up a road two years after it was freshly paved, the town, there's a fine.
Fifteen hundred.
You know, we really have to be proactive. We have to see what opportunities we have, where we need to, to grow, and see what money. I know, Art, I sent you NJ TAP. That's something, I don't know if we're eligible for that. Um, but, but again, Freehold Borough just got some money. Um, we really have to be proactive in trying to get things to address the, the water issue in town.
We have gotten one point six million dollars of American Rescue Plan money. Half of that goes to sewer, half of that goes to the water department, so that is.
But right now, that's fixing repairs, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah. Infrastructure repair.
Yeah.
A few months ago, Mayor, I had mentioned at a meeting that Highland Park, which is a similar size to us, they came up with a plan. They broke down their town into several locations, and they cleaned and relined the pipes. It's cost effective in a way that we're not ripping up every road, replacing every pipe, but we have to look into these things because if we're just going to keep putting money aside just for repairs, you know, patches aren't going to fix everything. Uh, I said that back in like October or November. We never looked into it again. We need to put in a plan and have that money, at least to start it, to know what it's going to cost, how, you know, we threw numbers around the last time we talked about it, but nobody's actually sat down and looked and, and seen it. Uh, last week, I actually stopped down here at the police department just to ask a question regarding when people call, um, our police department to state that they have the brown water or something's going on. We have to have a way to track that. And I'm sure we keep on, you know, our files, the way they, the calls come in, how to track what part of town, how often. I mean, we have to put a plan in place, and it's like six hundred thousand dollars or one point one million. I mean, that should be set aside to say that we're going to put a plan in action and, and get things done.
So I know the residents have been told to call down to the DPW, and I know Age has been keeping track of those calls, correct? Yeah, they shouldn't be calling the police. They should be calling them. So you have that with you?
Yeah.
And do we know how many calls we've gotten and what areas, which areas are the?
How many are there?
Council, council, for your information, October zero, November zero, December zero, January zero, February zero, March one. Go back to, go back to last year, we had calls, and the last call was seven or six. We have another call. Water main break in January, it pulls in, and then porch. Here, actually.
And I mean this with all due respect to everyone in this room. We're skewing the data. Like, that's a reality, and we're going to call a spade a spade. If we're not being proactive in telling people to call, there has to be, you know, to say there's zero, zero, and, and you're right, Art, there probably is zero. But.
We know it's happening.
Yeah, so it's like, and Age, it's nothing on your department. It's not anything you're doing, Art. Yeah, one hundred percent, and, and I completely understand that. But again, my concern is, we know it's happening. But I, I don't, I don't think we should be relying on phone calls to say, hey, this is what's happening because we know it's happening. It, we're not getting accurate.
Well, Councilman, what that does really though, gives us a target area to work with.
No, no.
It appears to be a target area in town that basically have this problem. So the consultants that are here tonight are now working on that target area and coming up with this different scenarios on how to solve that target area. It's not coming from all over town. It's a target area.
Yeah, no, and I'm, I'm happy that we at least have a target area, right? But the thing is, six hundred thousand dollars is nothing compared, we need probably, you're talking about upwards of close to a hundred million dollars to replace everything that needs to be replaced.
That's a good, I think the last number I heard was fifty from Bruce a couple of years ago, so with the supply chain the way it is now and everything, hundred million is probably a good number.
You're talking about? I just want us to be proactive. I, I just think we really.
And we are too. We are not, we are proactive. Right now, our water treatment plant is putting out some of the best water we've ever put. It's after it leaves the plant.
It's irrelevant because when it leaves the plant.
It gets dirty.
So we can have the best water treatment plant, but it makes no sense. It makes no point.
There are things that we are considering, and you'll hear from the consultants in a few minutes where we're at.
All right.
Don't we have a resolution today for the, to do something with the water treatment plant that's going to cost us over six hundred thousand dollars? Because that was the, the bid we got?
I don't think it's on.
It's not the, on the agenda yet, but we, that was our lowest bid for the project, the projected project. I mean, we know we're taking care of the water, but if it's not getting there clean, doesn't resolve.
That, I think you're talking about the meter project?
No, I'm talking about the chloride.
Sodium hypochlorite type.
Yeah.
It's not on for this.
No, it's not on.
No.
Anyone else? Roll call? Yes is in favor of the budget. No is not in favor of the budget.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
No.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
The budget is adopted by the majority of the governing body. Now, we have an authorization of self-examination of the twenty twenty-three municipal budget. Mr. Zanga, would you please explain what that is?
This is, the borough is under self-review, so in past years, when we'd send a budget down to the state and have to wait for them to review it and have comments, this resolution gives me the authority to tell you that debt services are all provided in the budget. Reserve on collected taxes and other items are all provided for in this budget, so.
So it meets the state's requirements?
It meets all the requirements, and I'm certifying that everything's in the budget.
Okay.
Accurately.
Right then. Resolution?
Resolution twenty twenty-three one fifty-seven, self-examination of budget resolution. Whereas NJSA forty A colon four dash seventy-eight B has authorized the local finance board to adopt rules that permit municipalities.
Make a motion, waive the full reading.
Motion has been made by Mr. Siula to waive the full reading, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Your pleasure on this resolution. Resolution has been moved by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Siula.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
So now we have our budget. Now we are authorized to self-examine. Can we now please answer the people's questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked for this to be put on. I had a whole bunch of things to say. I'm not going to say them. I'm just going to introduce at this time, we have from Agro-Environmental, Mike Fury. And for Enzo Corp, we have Charles Sayulis. Mr. Fury is our water treatment operator and our consultant, and Mr. Sayulis, our electronic and electrical consultant. Gentlemen.
Hi, I'm, how's everybody doing? I, again, like, Art said, my name is Mike Fury. I'm the, I'm the president, owner of Agro-Environmental and Laboratory Services. Just to give you some, some background on me, I've been in the water business for over thirty years. I'm a T four, W three licensed treatment plant operator. I own a certified laboratory. I have, I sit, currently sit on the Drinking Water Quality Institute for New Jersey. I'm the chair of the lead service line replacement, state lead service line replacement, uh, committee. And I also, I, I've been a longtime member of the lead and drinking water task force that was put together by the, by Governor Murphy. And, and, and that's, that's been going on for about forty years. And like I said, I, I have many years' experience. I've, I've worked with the city of Newark on their lead and drinking water problems. I've, I've helped the city of Trenton out with all their water quality issues. Several, several water systems in the, in the state of New Jersey that has had serious infrastructure problems. It's like, I'm, I'm not going to kid you. New Jersey is struggling with infrastructure. It's well-known. And, 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 you know, we've been working with these towns and cities to, to get their water system back to, back to normal. This is Chuck. Let's just introduce him.
Hi, I'm Chuck Sayulis, president of Engineered Solutions Corp. I've been a professional mechanical engineer for forty years. Um, we do water and wastewater treatment plant troubleshooting, process control upgrades and, and, uh, design. Uh, we've worked on Newark, like Mike has, and other water treatment systems, both water and wastewater. And we've been here for a number of years, working on your systems, trying to get the treatment plant up and operational and providing clean water. That's what our task was, and that's where we're at.
Yeah, and so one of the things that we wanted to mention right up front, we wanted to be positive about what's been happening for the last couple of years. You've, uh, the, the borough has put a significant amount of money into repairing the treatment plant. And, and, and there's been a lot of work done. Um, you know, Bruce knows that the two R, the well two R is now online and operational after a couple of years. We, we completely rehabbed all the filters. Uh, we've, we've repaired the chlorination system, the lime system. We've added automation. We've done a tremendous amount of work at the treatment plant, a significant amount of work. And Chuck, you could just describe some of the work that you've been doing.
Well, some of the work that we've been doing, other than getting the treatment plant to actually produce clean water, which included a lot of things like replacing sand and getting controls working, especially in the, in the chemical feed areas. We've, um, we've gone through the control system and are replacing outdated and unreparable hardware. Um, putting a computer-controlled system in that will, that will be there to replace some of the hardware that you just can't buy anymore. Rather than doing an entire control panel upgrade, we're going to do it, um, the least expensive way possible by putting a computer in there and replacing the pieces as they fail and are unreplaceable. There's a number of pieces of equipment in the plant that are replaceable. We have replaced them. We've replaced valves and actuators. We've replaced broken parts in the control system too. There's two major chemical feed systems. One is chlorine and one is lime. Both of those have been upgraded in many areas. Um, some were required by the NJDEP, and some were required just because we had to do it to get it working. Yeah, one of the things you were talking about before was a six hundred thousand dollar upgrade to sodium hypochlorite. I'm not quite sure what that's about. I'd like to get more information on that, uh, just so we understand what you plan on doing in the treatment plant. Um, so right now, we're, we were there today, working on putting the programmable logic controller into the control panel to replace a thing called a stepper, which was used in the forties and fifties by AT&T to transfer phone calls. And it's, it's actually being, was being used in your control panel to figure out which filter was going to be backwashed. And you can't get those steppers anymore. Um, but we're replacing it with a PLC, and we're going to replace some of the other things in there. We're working on getting new radios for the Applebee tank, which has had some problems. Um, we've got a good handle on the Applebee tank. As of last week, we've stopped it overflowing um, by manipulating some set points in the control system at the booster pump station, which basically fills that tank when it needs to be filled. So those are two big things that we've been working on that are going to make the whole system work better. When you get the Applebee tank working better, some of the major changes in the distribution system, which causes the brown water that the people have seen, will, will be reduced because the consistent flow will be, the flow will be consistent. As, as opposed to, you know, okay, the tank dropped, and now the booster pumps come on at two thousand gallons a minute, and they're throwing water all over the town. So working on the booster pump station, getting controls to the Applebee tank working better are two important parts of making the distribution system a more stable system, and stability is what you want in a system like.
Yeah, one of the other things that we're working on, we have come up with a plan. The, the, the South River did have an exceedance for copper, so there is a compliance issue for a couple, a year and a half ago. They had a failure for copper. Recently, you're back into compliance. The DEP has requested that a plant be put into place to improve your treatment process. One of the things that you have is the lime system. The lime system, I'm just going to approximate the time it's been there. Probably close to fifty years.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably close to fifty years, and lime historically, for any kind of water treatment plant, is not the most efficient way to, to adjust for pH. So what we recommend is, is a change.
Excuse me, but in English. I, I assume you're saying lime, L-I-M-E, to adjust for pH, which is what?
We, we need to adjust for pH in order to optimize the, the removal of iron magnates and also to, hold on, I, I can explain this. Is to stabilize the water out in the system so you, you don't have leaching of lead and copper into the water. You, you adjust the pH in order to reduce corrosion. And, and, and this is, and I'm going to show you, this is from Chuck's report. This really, this picture really does tell it all.
Yes, I've seen it.
It's like, you know, the, the tuberculation and the buildup of iron magnates has been going on for, for a number of years. And you have to optimize your corrosion system. So what we're suggesting is possibly introducing replacing lime with, with acoustics soda and then adding. adding a polyphosphate to line the insides of the pipe. This is what, what water systems historically do to coat the pipes, to reduce corrosion and to reduce the likelihood of iron and magnes getting into people's water supply. That was one of, one of our ideas that we had, one of the plans that we presented. The other one is out in the distribution system, is we, we want to do a better job of flushing the system. And there's a, there's a process called unidirectional flushing, where you optimize your valve, you close your valve, and you optimize the system to get the highest flow through the system so you can, so you could scour the insides of the pipe. And if you scour the insides of the pipe, you'll remove all those deposits of iron magnes that built up over the years.
So what you're telling us is, is that to close off the system and then force the water in there to come out hydrant.
Faster.
Faster, which will then cause, when you say scouring, clean the pipe?
Clean the pipes.
Okay.
Clean the inside pipes. That's a natural way that you can clean the pipes in a, in a, in a better way. Now, you know, something that the councilwoman mentioned, there is a process called cleaning and lining of pipes. It, it is an expensive process. It should be looked at, it should be examined, and possibly come up with a long-term plan. We do know, from the data that age has, has, has gotten us, it's in a certain area of town. And this is the first time we've had the, we had that information back to us where we knew the dirty water is in a certain part of town, and that's where you need to focus your efforts. Focus those efforts in those areas with, A, unidirectional flushing, and then long-term look into cleaning and lining of the insides of the pipe, not necessarily replacement of the pipes. Replacement of the pipes is extremely expensive process. Cleaning and lining is expensive. It's not $80 million. It's not $50 million. You, you need to get an engineer in here and evaluate it and give you real numbers before you can move forward. You, you mentioned, and I have to do mention NJTAP. You mentioned, this is a brand-new program that was put out by Commissioner Lattarett. This just came out like a couple, couple months ago.
Yeah, March.
Came out in March, and I highly recommend that you take, take full advantage of that program.
Actually spoke to Carolyn about it. She's supposed to be sending us information, I'll be forwarding it to Joe.
Right, it, 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 it's, it's really targeted for troubled water systems. You know, infrastructure that has failed. I mean, this is, you know, this is, you're not the only town in the state of New Jersey where your infrastructure has failed. You're not unique.
There are other towns that have brown water?
There's, there's other towns. We worked with a town down in South Jersey, down Long Beach Island, they historically had brown water problems. I went, went down there, consulted with the engineer, you know, did some changes to the treatment process, and the problems went away. I mean, these, these can be fixed, but you need to come up with a plan. I can't agree with you more. You need, you need a long-term plan for this. This is, this is a very difficult problem to solve, and you need to have a, a long-term plan to do that. So we're, Chuck, on his side, is making, doing his thing, you know, at the treatment plant and working on, you know, the Applebee tank, getting these, the automation just right. We're working on optimizing the treatment plant, you know, we're doing everything. We've made a lot of effort in fixing the treatment plant. You've done an extraordinary job as a borough, spending tremendous amounts of money. There's a lot of towns who just don't spend money. They do not want to spend money. This town has spent a lot of money and has made a great effort to fix the treatment plant. But now that you fixed the treatment plant, now you've got to focus on your distribution system. That's difficult to do. It's a big, large area, and you got to, you got to do it little by little over time. I mean, this, it can be fixed. This, this can be fixed if you make that effort.
Mr. Fury, you mentioned iron and magnes. Just, the reason we have iron magnes is because we're using our well water.
Correct.
Surface water doesn't have iron and magnes.
Right. The surface water you get from East Brunswick does not have iron magnes. It's, it really comes naturally from the wells that you're producing the water at, you know, the wells have iron and magnes coming out of, out of the ground. It's natural. These, the one thing I wanted to mention, too, is these iron and magnes, these are aesthetic standards, they are not health standards, they will not get you sick. We continuously test the water for bacteria. We continuously test for things that, that are harmful, and, and, and the water is in compliance with all those, all those tests. And I want to stress that. The, the, the dirty water is coming from iron and magnes, especially iron, that's where you see the orange color. I mean, it's, I, believe me, I don't, aesthetically, it looks terrible, and you need to do something about it. And we had a video come, from somebody's coming right out of their taps. I mean, I wouldn't be happy about that. It's coming out of a tap like that, so you need, you need to do something about it. And so, so I think with, with a good concerted effort, where we can work with CME and Chuck's engineering firm, we can, we can come up with a plan that's going to work for you guys.
Mr. Fury, does the borough need any equipment to do the directional flushing, or is there anything that?
They have automated, automated valve turners. Companies have those. I don't think you're, you don't have one of those. But those are, you know, they're on the back of the truck, they go out and operate the valves. You don't, you don't have that equipment. If, if you were to buy a piece of, I mean, I'm not here to help you spend the money, but it's a good piece of equipment to have.
Yeah. Turning a valve 252 turns is a lot of work. Usually takes three or four guys for a while, and some of these valves are 200, 300 turns to open or close.
And, and by the way, you're required under the Water Quality Accountability Act to operate all the valves in the system, and then, and then, you know, every annual, you have to tell the DEP that you're doing that. So you're required to do it. So, to answer your question, yes, it's, it's, I think it's worth, I think it's worth, I don't know the, the cost of it, but they're, they're definitely worth getting.
And, and your guys in town, the DPW staff, is a good crew that can do almost anything. They're good mechanically, they're good with process, they, they know how to test samples. There's three or four guys down there that do a really good job. Sometimes they don't have the equipment they need, sometimes they've got to do it on time that's overtime, but they do a good job and they work hard at it. So, you know, getting them equipment to make this, like, for instance, turning the valve 232 turns takes the crew a while. So, you know, every, if you put a machine on it that does it in five minutes, instead of two or three guys taking an hour, you saved a lot of money right there.
Yeah, you run the risk. If you don't have, you don't operate these valves, and when you go to do this unidirectional flushing, or any kind of flushing, the valves might not close, they might not open.
Or they'll break.
Or they'll break, and then you're replacing valves.
Usually break.
They usually break. That's, that's, yeah, they usually break. You know, this is like, you know, we've talked about this a lot, Chuck, right? It's like an onion, and, and you're peeling the onion back, and every time we peel the onion back, unfortunately, you know, you know, we find other issues. We find another issue.
It's the old plumber's rule, if you don't have to touch it, don't.
Yeah.
But then, when you do touch it and it was not touched, it's going to break.
Yes, exactly.
And then you've got a bigger problem.
All right.
One of the things that's, a very important part of getting clean water out of the treatment plant, which for a while, it wasn't happening, is that now there's a lot less iron and magnes. As a matter of fact, there's no iron and magnes going out into the distribution system to sit there and pile up on the bottom of the pipe. So, but, I mean, today we did sampling down at the treatment plant. The iron, iron coming out of the treatment plant was .2 milligrams per liter, okay? The wells are what, 400?
They're, they're up there.
Yeah, 400, 500. So the treatment plant's going from 400, 500 milligrams per liter of iron to .2. Magnes is .017, similar numbers from the wells. So, you know, when you're talking about numbers like 200 or 300 milligrams per liter, okay, that, you know, a liter of water and half, and half a gram of iron is a lot of iron, okay? 500 milligrams is, is half. So by getting that down to almost zero, which .2 is zero for all intents and purposes, it's not going out into the treatment plant anymore. So the problems to the distribution system, the problems in the distribution system are from what went out there over many decades that we're trying to clean out. So a few years ago, when, a few years ago, around 2019, a new flushing plan was put in place by the borough, okay? You helped design it, I helped design it, the guys in DPW helped design it, and they've, they are doing a flushing plan right now that it's not directional flushing, but it's, it's normal flushing. Before that, discussing with, you know, people, they, they were saying that they weren't told to do it the right way. So it, it was, even the flushing that you did do years ago was, was not the greatest flushing. But a number of years ago, you started doing flushing again, and it's, it's made, I would think, tremendous changes in the distribution system. You know, treatment plant's not putting iron and magnes out there anymore. The flushing, the flushing plans, the three time, the three sets of plans, doing it twice a year, is doing a good job of cleaning things out. But then when you have something like a 410,000 gallon flow of water in two or three hours because there's six pumpers on two hydrants, putting your house out, you're going to have all kinds of distribution problems because you've got little four-inch pipes that have a lot of water going through, and it's going to break that tuberculosis off, and it's going to sit there and flow all around, especially in certain parts of town.
We use a lot of big words, like, we apologize if we.
No, this was extremely helpful.
Okay. But, you know, one of the things we did, and we said, and I was here a couple of years ago, I said, and I looked at your, your water system, and I said, fix the treatment plant first, produce great water, right? And that is exactly what the borough did over the last couple of years. They, they put tremendous amount of effort and time and resources into fixing the treatment plant. Now you're, now you're producing high-quality water, and, and you're less reliant on, on East Brunswick's, you know, the interconnection, and that's, and that's, and really, that's long-term, that's a good thing. And so now that you focused on that, the, the next focus is on the distribution system and what you're going to do on, in, in the distribution system. And let me, and I, and there, there is money available. I was, I sat on the council up in, way up in North Jersey. We, we applied for, for money from, from the federal money, and we, we got $3.4 million filling out an application. And I, I'm still surprised we, we get that money. But the, the money is definitely available for water infrastructure project. You just have to, you have to go out there and seek it and find, find out where it is.
And you have to have the plan made to know what you need or how much you're going to need to be able to apply for those.
To justify for the money, right, you do. But it's, their, their money is available. Apparently, the congressman said, your letter influenced the committee, the federal congressional committee, to give you the, the most money in the entire state of New Jersey. I'm still stunned about the fact that we were able to get grant money, $3.4 million, just asked. So you, you need to, water infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure, there's money available. You just, you need to ask the right people. Thank you, guys.
So.
Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. So just stay there. The gentleman asked about what causes the brown water. You're saying that it's the rust. The rust builds up in the pipe. When there is a shaking of the system, parts of that break off, and therefore comes out of the faucet as brown water. Is that correct?
Right, the, the increases in flow, like Chuck mentioned, if you have tuberculated pipe and, and the flow changes in the inside of that pipe, it'll scour the inside of the pipe and it'll break, it'll break that.
Tuberculated pipe, tuberculated pipe means that there is rust, iron deposits around the pipe.
On the inside of the pipe?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the picture tells everything, so I'm glad that Chuck bought that.
And, and, so if you've got a, you know, there's certain velocities in pipes, you know, 3 feet per second, 10 feet per second, so on and so forth, where you need to have that flow rate so that nothing settles on the bottom of the pipe. So when you, so, you know, like, let's say dead-end streets, you've got one house all the way at the end that uses 100 gallons a day and is a four-inch pipe. What's going to happen is that pipe's not giving you a whole lot of flow, so whatever's in that pipe is going to settle, and then if something happens over there, and now all the water in that pipe has to go that way, it'll stir that up. And so that poor house at the end of the block is going to get some dirty water, okay? So there's two things. There's, there's stuff in the water that actually settles in the pipe, and there's a lot less of that now. And there's also the, the buildup that's on the inside of the pipe that when you have a high velocity rate of water flowing through there, it's fast enough to actually break it off. And, and that's what happens.
Okay, now there, as you talked about the chemicals, that it is freshwater there. Okay, good. And you've got the report from Mr. Saurus concerning as to where all this is happening. It seems to be all happening in the northern part of town, in specifically just one, one area there, yes.
Page it to before that.
Yes, I have, I have that report. Grants, Mr. Lundenski, are we looking for grants?
All the time.
All right then.
CME is always on top of it with us. The TAP one just came out. We're working on that. We did get the OPERA grant. Problem is, some of the grants that we go for, we end up not qualifying for, or we get on the list and we're so far down the list.
Thursday is the USDA. I don't think you qualify for it, but we're sitting in on that one because they funded a lot of the cleaning and lining that I've done. They did all Lake Como, they covered that, and there are grants within that. It's not all alone. So I'm going to participate in that one. We just had a session about approaching state legislators for line item in the federal budget, not in the state budget, so.
So we are looking for grants. The problem is, we may get a grant, but we're on the waiting list. Okay.
Yeah, for instance, Well 2R that we just drilled, we originally had put in an application for a low-interest grant or no-interest grant from the DEP, and at the time we put in the grant, they told us we were number 1,000 something, geez. You know, most of these grants, Camden, Newark, Trenton, you know, and then whatever else is left for the smaller municipalities.
Newark and Trenton got a lot of money.
Yeah.
And that's why, Mr. Mayor, it's, it's not that we aren't applying, but decided on the well to just go out to bid on our own because it was so far down the line, we weren't going to get the money.
Okay.
The application was made, it was submitted, we were ranked. I think we were 1,400 or something at one point.
And, and exactly what they said, the winter is our lowest usage amount of water, so nothing was happening into pipes until we had the fire.
Correct.
And that took longer than we expected. We expected the normal couple days for it to settle down, it just didn't, no. And then we had a hydrant flush, because if we don't hydrant flush when we're doing it, you can't do it in May and June when people start doing their lawns and all that, you'll use up our water supply.
Correct.
So, we're a rock and a hard place sometimes.
Mr. Mayor, there was a plan years ago, and some of the lines, like the four inches, were replaced rather than cleaned and lined because they get enlarged then, and there were replacements, we're doing replacements as part of road projects, you know, the couple of the sections there, we did brand-new mains and abandoned the old ones. So there is work, but I agree, the cleaning and lining is the way to go. I did all of Highland Park, I did all of Lake Como, I did whatever Spotswood did.
And I think Mr. Koch gave me a number around the $1.50 a foot, or $150.
I'd like it to be a $1.50.
I meant the $150 a foot.
Last time I checked with the guys I talked to, Kramer, Jay Fletcher Kramer, who does a lot of it, as well as Ducon, and it was 125, but with everything going on, it's probably closer to 150 now.
$150 a foot.
$792,000 to do one mile. Yes, thank you. Now, a question that came up, and it's been several times brought up, especially on Facebook, where all major discussions go on. When was the last time we raised our water rates?
First of 2020.
First 2020, okay. We talked about relining pipes. The picking up of the tracks that is going to occur, at that time, have we discussed with the county of whether or not we're going to replace the water pipes, or are they just going to pick up the?
No, they're just going to dig up the tracks, but we do have a guarantee, as long as they're on the project, if anything gets damaged, they repair it. Once they lose, once they leave the project, we're back to our own. And you know, that small part of sewer line a couple of years ago at Railroad Bridge And you know, that small part of sewer line, a couple of years ago, at Railroad Bridge, cost us almost a half a million dollars to fix.
That repairs for both the sewer and the water.
Right.
Okay.
Have we thought about doing our own repair before they go in, so that we're not ripping up?
We are, we are advertising for an operator supervisor. As of this day, we haven't gotten anybody qualified yet, but we're still looking.
Something to keep in mind is cleaning and lining is very effective, but you still get breaks because you are still dealing with cast iron pipe.
The caustic rinse, you use the lime, you said, now?
We use lime for pH adjustment.
The other one with that...
It does the same pH adjustments. It's just, it's a liquid chemical instead of a dry chemical.
But does it decrease the brown water, or will it just, will it make it?
It'll adjust the pH easier, so we can treat the water better and then optimize the, at the pH on the distribution system.
Well, if the water's very acidic, and that, that causes more problems in the piping, so lime is added to raise the, to raise the pH, so it's less acidic. And lime is a finicky chemical, let's say. You know, you've gotta take a bag full of lime, put it in a bin, it gets dropped into a mixer that mixes it around at a certain rate, and then it becomes a slurry, and then the slurry gets pumped into the system. So, you know, every step in there, there's a little bit of automation, but it's kind of hard to control really accurately. Whereas caustic soda is something where we want point four milligrams per liter of caustic soda, you set it to the pump and it puts it in there. If you wanted that of lime, it would be really tough to get that number, you might get plus or minus some. So the lime system is harder to get a really good number in. Right now, it's doing a decent job of, of bringing the pH up, and pH also has to be set correctly so that the treatment filters actually reduce the iron and manganese the way they should. So, but that's working really well because the stuff coming out of the plant is really clean. Okay? Getting more of it out into the distribution system through the two-million-gallon tank and through the booster pump station is more difficult and harder to control.
Yeah, what you wanna do with the chemical treatment is put a thin film on the insides of the pipe and, and protect it from corroding.
And that would be the polyphosphate?
That would be the, the polyphosphate.
So that, this is another chemical treatment, so if you wanna go out and clean and line the pipes, you clean them and you throw a piece of plastic pipe on the inside, basically. It's kinda like a tube that you push through there, okay? Where polyphosphate, what that does is, it's a chemical that goes into the pipe and glues itself to the inside of the pipe as, as a very thin layer. And it's not as good as cleaning and lining, but it's sure better than doing nothing. And it does a decent job of encapsulating the metals so that they stick on the walls of the pipe.
So...
And there's less flaking, correct?
Yeah.
Because all I have in my head is, Roto-Rood should just go in there with the big thing, push it all out, and it should be done. I know, I know. I've been to people's houses where it looked like nobody flushed the toilet for days.
That's how the cleaning is done.
That's how, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's a hundred and fifteen dollars a foot.
But then it's not a pipe slip through it, it's a cement lining. It's about an eighth-inch-thick cement lining that's centrifugally cast and troweled by a machine, so.
Pulled through. So both of it, you know, are very effective protecting the inside of the pipe.
So...
Two things you have to do, is the good chemical treatment and, and the, and the cleaning and lining of the pipe.
Okay. Now, is any of this harmful to people?
Now, it's, if you pick up a can of Coke, you see phosphoric acid on the side of it, almost all, it's, it's a preservative used in foods, drinks, and, and it's very common in all, in the treatment system, about the country. The reason why the city of Newark became, got into compliance with their lead levels, they added polyphosphate. They were not adding polyphosphate. And, and we all knew, that was, that made national news. One of the most effective thing they did was add polyphosphate, and, and then over time, their, their lead levels dropped and to, well, into compliance.
Mayor, if I may, I think you might have been thinking of when cleaning and lining was done, I would say it was Tom's River many, many years ago, they used a different process, and that's where people started to become concerned with the cancer outbreak. We always use cement lining, it's just pour one cement and the water in it continually cures it, and that is not a problem.
Yeah, it's, it's not harmful, it's, it's in naturally, it's in, as a preservative, you pick up a can of Coke, you see, it says phosphoric acid. I know it's, you know, people are concerned about additives into drinking water, and, you know, there is a concern, you know, more, do you wanna put more things? That's, that's something, that's a decision that's gonna have to be made by the borough.
I can make a few jokes about Coca-Cola, but I'm not going to.
When you do the, when you do the lining and, and cleaning, with the age of some of the pipes, are there more of a chance of getting water main breaks?
Yes, well, no, you really don't change the inside diameter, it's just you're still dealing with a cast iron pipe. And the cement lining is not a structural element, so it's only an eighth-inch thick, maybe, you know, three-sixteenths, but you get a better flow rate through it because the end factor is smoother, the diameter is marginally thinner, you get rid of the restriction, you can have a, an eight-inch pipe with an opening this big on it because of all the tuberculosis, the mineral buildup. So you get rid of that, you restore the diameter, and you just take a tiny bit away, but the coefficient of friction is so much better that the water, you get much more capacity for it.
And, 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 and he's right.
And it can handle higher velocity.
Yeah, you handle higher velocity, you improve your flows through your treatment system, your distribution system, have less dirty water outbreaks. Not an easy problem to solve, I'm not gonna kid you, this is, you're gonna have to come up with a, a very good plan over time to, to address this.
I will tell you that some of the towns, Highland Park, I did it in five sections. Spotswood would, back then, would do a couple hundred thousand dollars a year and design it one year, build it the next, design it the year after that and build it the next, and target the areas that were oldest in the community or where problems existed the most, had the most frequent brown water and, you know, low flow rates for fighting fires and such, so.
And that sounds like our basics parameters, our skeleton for the plan.
Yep.
Sir, you have your marching orders? The area sounds like the north end of town, that's where we're gonna aim. And you will report?
And I would just suggest, back years ago, you couldn't clean a four-inch, you can now, but I would recommend putting, replacing those with something larger next to it for firefighting capacity, it'd be much better for the system and four-inch lines, you can't, your current pumper will suck that dry even with a brand-new one. And we did some of that years ago as the prelude to cleaning and lining, but that never, the momentum wasn't continued.
Probably due to the cost, which is one of the reasons why we're, we're planning for the water utility to be upgraded, if you wanna say, equivalent to the electric utility, so that'll be separate on your bills, it'll say water and sewer, like other towns have it, to be separate so that it can bear the financial costs, because there's a lot more that goes into all this. We're all talking about drinking water, we haven't even talked about the sewers and what needs to be done with that, because once you pour it down the drain, nobody cares. But that also is a problem in our town, so we'll have that.
What's the going rate for pipe replacement per, per foot?
For the sanitary?
Oh, water.
For water? It's gonna depend on the diameter. I mean, you've got some big pipes and you've got the smaller ones. I think we should look at, I'd like to see where that area is in the north end that's problematic. I believe William Street was replaced. All of the north end industrial park is new. William Street coming down towards the heart of town was done, I think, yeah, it's a larger twelve, I think. I think it's a twelve coming down. Frank Re put that into the park area, I think, and then, so I think we're talking about up in there, so.
Four-inch pipe that's there.
Well, whatever, that whole, that whole network in there that hasn't been upgraded, some of those we did as part of the road project, but others we haven't. So it's a really, if I can get ahold of where the target area is, then I can map what I think has been done, and then tell you what is left, and then we could probably better identify an estimated overall cost to give you a chance to stage it if you choose to.
That's the...
Yep, two sections.
I don't have the pipe thing here.
No, the map, it's a map of the problem.
I don't have your report.
Around there.
Well, I think we were talking about this.
She has it. Yeah, take a look at it.
We will do this from the, from the calls that we got.
Calls that DBW got.
Does the borough have this, or?
Yeah, the borough has this.
The red ones are where the calls came from.
Okay, so it's like predominantly the north end, like from Main Street over to the north.
Main Street to the north prospect.
Report back to us, then.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm just asking that when we do this, we just don't focus on one area, we get an estimate for everything, and then we, as a council, decide, we focus on the north area, and we come up with the plan, rather than just trying to piece this together. Let's see how much it is total.
Yeah, I can give you a number for all of it, it's gonna change over the years.
No, that's fine, but at least if you have an idea, you can then apply for grants based off the total cost.
Well, keep in mind, yeah, you can, but this is not a twelve-month...
No, this is, you're talking about a year.
Process because you put bypass piping on the ground. So we don't start till March and are off the ground by Thanksgiving, because otherwise you could have frozen pipes, so, and then nobody's got water. So we can't have that. So when we say that huge, around a million-dollar project, you're gonna do it in stages, and as you're finishing one section, pick up that bypass, move it to another section, move it to another section. And so it's a time-consuming process. It's not like you're gonna come and hit the whole town at one time, generally speaking. So just something that, you don't wanna put down more than you can get done, and you don't wanna leave something taken apart, and then the cold weather comes and the bypass piping laying in the gutters is frozen, and the hoses going to their houses are frozen, and nobody's got water. So that's why just, you know, having a long-term plan financially is good, but you can't execute it unless you get, you know, probably a very, have several contracts out at one time, perhaps.
So basically, Plan A was to do the treatment, Plan B now is for the rest of the towns. All right. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So that ends our discussion as to the, to the water and to the budget, which is, thank you all for coming, and if you have any questions, please go out and talk to the people there. We have on the agenda session, two items, actually. One, did you wanna talk anymore about the water treatment plant operator, Mr. Lundenski?
Nope.
You just talked about it, okay. The other one concerns the Portuguese flag raising and parade, which is scheduled for June the tenth. They need approvals, so we're not gonna vote on it tonight, but the application was brought by Councilwoman Mara into the clerk's office, they'll get everything set at our next meeting, we will vote on that. I don't think we need to vote on the parade, I just talked to the chief wherever he was at, and he said there won't be a problem.
Okay.
We'll just quietly do it, I mean, and take it up there, so. Speaking of which, we have Mr. Zenga there. By the way, hello, Mr. Stankowitz, our auditor was here, if you had any questions, we thank you for coming. While you're here, and Mr. Zenga...
Try it again?
There is something, 'cause the Portuguese Center, nonprofit, every year, the demands on the school and the nonprofits, we grant them some relief, can we, is that in our budget? Can we do that?
Okay, next meeting, we'll do a resolution.
All right.
For the summer, I think we do June thirtieth to July, to September.
July, August, September, I think, July first to September thirty, so next meeting we'll do the resolutions to school and the nonprofits.
Yeah.
Demand relief.
Okay.
No pun intended, it filtered its way through the appropriations.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, okay. All right, very good then. All right, thank you. Did you have anything else with the Portuguese club there? Thank you for, they got it in early, that's nice.
That was the goal, to get it in early and to make sure they got approval to be able to come up, 'cause they wanna start advertising for the flag raising as well.
All right, then, now we move on with our agenda ordinance, second reading, public hearing on twenty twenty-three dash nineteen. And then we'll go into our reports. Okay? Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty-three nineteen, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter one ninety-three entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Make a motion waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Mr. Seula, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, if you have any comments or questions concerning no parking any time on the causeway street, you may come forward and ask him questions. Hello, sir.
Hello, sir, how are you?
Oh, very good. Long time no see.
Sean Houseman to Willett Avenue. Question, what is this supposed to do, this ordinance?
This is going to prevent parking on one side of the causeway.
That's for the trucks?
Commercial.
For anybody.
They shouldn't be parked in there.
Um, they park.
On one side?
Yes.
Why? Why only one?
Opens up the road more.
Okay. As far as I know, we already have an ordinance that says, commercial vehicles of a certain size can't park on any street in the borough.
On residential areas.
Uh, is that what it says in the ordinance?
No. The last ordinance that we passed was residential areas.
Are you sure?
I thought it said...
I thought it says on any street in the borough.
On, it might, we, we passed, the last one we passed were on private property.
No, 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 I'm not talking about that one, I'm talking about the one that's been there for years.
There may be one. I don't know. Also, remember, that's a county road.
That has nothing to do with the parking, if we have an ordinance that says any street in the town.
I really don't know.
We can enforce parking on a county road, we can enforce speeding on a county road, we, the idea that it's a county road doesn't prevent our enforcement.
I don't know every ordinance in the book.
But you did say that it's only residential.
But, with, the last one we passed was residential and, and driveways.
Yeah, no, that's...
We already had, we had, already had parking, no parking in residential trucks, whether it's all streets, I'd have to check.
Okay, 'cause as I recall, back when I was on the council, we were enforcing that they couldn't have commercial vehicles parked on that street, and they also, I believe we have an ordinance that says they can't do repairs on any street in the borough of the town.
We know that.
Okay, so how does this change since we already have ordinances that'll do this? I mean, I, I remember, it's on Facebook all the time, a few years ago, you'd mentioned the same thing, that it's, it's a county road, what can we do, but again...
We'll make it crystal...
We can enforce parking on a county road.
It will make it crystal clear that they cannot do it. There have been summonses issued, there have been, Mr. Droppa has gone out there, he has issued summonses for the parking on the Blue Acres, for the improper dumping, and they are slowly winding their way through the court system.
But again, it's only...
I don't believe there's any no parking signs.
Is this gonna be on the north side or the south side that you can't park?
Dairy Queen side.
That would be the north side.
Yeah.
Okay, so you can't park, but all those vehicles can still park on the south side?
Correct, unless you're correct on the ordinance. There, there are no, no parking signs, I tell you that.
Well, there were paper signs on all of the telephone poles for years, you know, that you couldn't see them because the trucks were parked in front of them.
Actually, you couldn't see them because they, people that own the buildings ripped them off.
Yep.
Because they have no concept of law.
Well, I think they were out there getting ready to put up signs, right? Somebody said they were taking measurements. But this will only include one side of the street.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on first call, second call, third call?
The close.
Second.
Motion enclosed by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Motion to move.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Discussion, roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mara?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seula?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to reports. Mr. Koch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So regarding the 2020 and 2021 roadways, there's one punch list item left. There was a meeting scheduled for last week, but the contractor who was going to do the work wasn't able to make it. There's a meeting this Thursday. Hopefully that meeting comes to pass and we can get that one item resolved, in which case we can close out that project. The Applebee, Morningside, and Fifth Street project is underway. I'm working with the contractor and his subcontractor to get the water work done, the replacement valves and hydrants. And then once that's done, they can schedule the resurfacing of the roadways. The 2023 local aid program, we provided you with a proposal for that. There is a new, there are two new DOT grants out. The one on my report is known as the 2023 Local Transportation Projects. That is what used to be called the discretionary grant at the will of the governor. The towns can make applications and at the will of the governor, grants can be issued for roadway work. I thought that might be a great opportunity to do a couple of the roads where you had drainage problems or sump pump problems. Could make an application for that to see if you're successful in getting money for it. And then right on the heels of that, the actual trust fund application announcement came out from the DOT. So we just got that letter, I think the day after I issued this report, that came out. And then there's the DEP Stormwater Assistance Grant Application, which is $25,000 for filling out a form. And for 2025, I believe it is, I will check my letter. Have to have certain upgrades to your stormwater mapping and this money can be used for that. So we've given you a proposal for applying for that if you'd like to. And then the subsequent mapping could be done. Going back to the electrical substation, the SCADA system is operational. It wasn't when I issued this report. It is now. The training will be scheduled. And once the training is done, I will close out that project. And then we can get together and talk about the substation maintenance for the forthcoming year because it's actually been about two years since we did this because we added the SCADA system and other work to it. Well, number two, they're going to be there Wednesday. My understanding is they will finish the punch list. And then my hope is that we can close out that project as well. As was discussed early in the meeting, the sodium hypochloride, which is chlorine, storage tank improvement biz were received on the 21st. That's entirely up to you as to how you'd like to proceed with that or if you don't want to. But at least you have a number for if you decide it's something you want to do. And the other item is for the backflow, the air gap and the black backflow preventer. The contractor allied construction is starting to get the materials in. And once they get everything, they're anxious to get out there and do that work. And that is my report. I will answer any questions.
Well, the Franklin and Joseph that I pointed out, if you're talking about sump pumps.
Mm-hmm.
It's a perfect thing to do it on.
Something like that. And also the other one we were talking about where they have some pumps that ice up at the intersection.
Old Chesky and Prentice.
Yes, yeah, I have the estimate with me. I think it was 200. It's probably quote, in that range to 250 now. So I thought if you took a few of those and put them together and made an application, see if you get the discretionary money. Then it's not a cost to the taxpayers and it puts that problem away. And it doesn't take away from your, kind of your annual road program as well because the trust fund application is right on the heels of it.
So keep going on that.
I have a question.
Yes, wait, Mrs. Ballas has something.
I've worked with Mr. Landenski and come up with a few roads and a cost estimate for it and we'll do that if that's okay. All right, good.
The work up by Fifth, what are you doing, Fifth and what other streets up there?
It is, you are with me. I'm going to just check my list so I don't misspeak. It is.
How far are you along on those?
We did the concrete ramps. They have water work to do, a couple of replacement hydrants and some replacement valves. That they, they had a plumber who was going to do the work. Then he took sick and they were getting other prices. Now the plumber seems to be back in better health and is going to do it. I was talking to the contractor today about getting that put together. We were kicking around some numbers and stuff he's concerned about. But we were talking about it today. I want to see that get done as soon as possible so we can get in and get the roads paved.
Okay, the only thing I was getting phone calls on all those streets was the notification to the people that lived there.
Yes, so I, I did talk to Mr. Gindy, I believe, about that. On a Thursday night, I got an email that said they got bounced off another job, so they're going to South River in the morning. I had no opportunity to send notices. I checked the notice that I had previously sent and it said they were going to be doing, you know, this work and then that work and then that work. It would all follow. But we had the conversation that before, once they finished the water work, I'm sorry, as Mr. Seula and I had talked about, I apologize, that we would send out another notice and tell them the order of the roads and what would be done.
They're worried about getting their car stuck. Can I pull out?
It won't happen.
I get it.
And if, even if we had.
Notification problem.
Even if we had to tow a car, it would be around the corner. I do not let cars get towed into an impound yard or anything like that. It just, it's not fair to people. But that's why that happened. It was like, you know, in the evening, and I guess he found out he couldn't go to another job and he said the crew's going there. And I, there was nothing I could do. It was dark out. I couldn't do notices. It wouldn't have made sense at that point. So that's why that happened.
Thank you.
I was not happy with it, but I want to see it done too, so.
Anyone else?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Mr. Zenga?
Thank you, Mayor. Two items on the agenda for resolutions. First one is purchasing the air packs under state contract. That was sort of fire department bond ordinance we did. And the second one is authorizing Daley's Field renovations. That is to grade, re-sod, topsoil, fertilize the whole field at Daley's Field. That's under the Educational Service Commission co-op. That's it.
Anything for Mr. Zenga? Our, yes, I thought I saw our fire chief. Hello, sir. Anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Yep.
We had, for April, we had 48 calls, including the structure fire, unfortunately, on Thomas Street. We are currently standing at 138 calls for the year. I'd like to thank the PD for helping us with all their help on Thomas, with everything you guys did for us. Just pleased everybody. Thank you very much. We have, we're making progress on the new engine. Three of our members of the committee are going Wednesday and Thursday to New Orleans to do a mid-inspection. The cab is mounted on the truck, on the frame, I should say, and everything. The pump is. They just completed the body, so they're going down to inspect the body before it's painted and everything and put on the vehicle. We're looking at mid to late June for a completion date of the new engine. Hopefully by then, by that time it would be up here for us to do another inspection before, you know, with delivery and everything like that. All of our trucks have been pump tested. All have passed. We're good with that. And as of right now, that's where we stand. Thank you.
So this, when did we order this fire truck?
Right before COVID hit, unfortunately.
Right, like 2020, 2019.
Yeah, it was 19, it was actually, but due to COVID, due to supply and demand of everything like that, it kept going. We kept getting pushed back, pushed back. One of the good things that we did do is that when we did sign the contract, we put a deposit half, we put half of the money down on the truck. So it kind of kept us, our price in check. Because unfortunately, they have been going back to other people and raising the price, going either you can back out of the contract or you can pay a cer, you know, extra amount of money. And they haven't done it with us. They've actually, we actually, because of taking so long, they've given us a third year of bumper-to-bumper warranty on the truck as a, you know, to say sorry. There's some other things that they're going to work out with us also for the truck. But otherwise, right now, we haven't, they haven't even talked about increasing the price or, you know, like, you know, making up for the, the cost of everything that has gone up. Because everything, as you know, has gone up, so right now, we're at status quo.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Soros?
Yes, Mayor. Reminder, our shred event is Saturday, May 20th at 9:00 AM to noon at the DPWR, 9 Ivan Way. No businesses allowed. It's a limit to five file boxes or 100 pounds per car. That's all I have, Mayor.
Anything for Mr. Soros? Chief?
Mayor, I have anything to report, but I just want to thank Art and Age. Over the weekend, because of the rainstorm, our roof collapsed. If you see that, there's new ceiling tile there. They came in today and cleaned it up, so we can have a council meeting here today. Also over here to my left, that's damage that's been done from previous rainstorms. I know many of you think probably it's something from Get Smart. I know a lot of yous are old like me. Remember Get Smart, the cone of silence? But that's not. That's damage from previous rainstorms, so. Apologize for what it looks like, but we'll get it done and we'll get it fixed.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
A lot of us do. I'm looking at people that do, so.
Thank you. Anything for the chief?
You just aged us all.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Are we heading to primaries? Are we all set with that?
Yeah.
We know we're going to be voting and all that?
Yes.
Excellent, very good. Anything else for the clerk?
Nope.
On the legal side, anything happening or chattering?
I have nothing to report.
Nothing more? You've talked enough for tonight? All right. I think I started last time on that side, so I'll start with you on this side.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say April 22nd was Earth Day. The Environmental Commission had their green fair. It went well. They had about 100 people of all ages come up and see the crafts and just get some informational stuff regarding the community garden, composting, music. It was a, it was a good time for all. I was actually not here that weekend because our South River Rec cheerleaders had their last cheerleading competition in Hershey Park. Both teams did well. They came in second place. It was fun to see all these little girls having a good time. They had a little concert for the kids afterwards. I've never seen so many little kids boy crazy over, boys they didn't even know. It was a new, new group out there doing like old Backstreet Boys songs. It was fun. Congratulations to them. I know the cheer season is over, but they will start up again in July. On the Board of Ed, I just want to mention that the primary school is running a food drive from May 1st to May 12th. For anybody that has kids in the primary school, if you could send foods, it's going all to the food bank. They did, they have Spirit Week this week at the primary and elementary school to support Mental Health Awareness Month. I also want to thank the Municipal Alliance for hosting with the police department. On April 20th, a presentation on drugs hidden in plain sight, vaping and social media dangers. They did it at the school for the kids as well as for the parents that same evening. So thank you for, for you guys helping out with that. I do want to say the school started with field trips again. I have a daughter in second grade who's excited to go down a sandy hook, not because they're going to the beach, but because they're going on a bus. My second grader has never been on a bus in South River because we don't offer bussing. So I just want to say thank you to the Board of Education, to taking out and being able to give those little fun things to the kids before the end of the year. For the library board, I'd like to say that their book sale was a success in April. Their summer program planning is underway. They have some new presenters that will be there this summer, so keep a lookout on their website. They have plans for a therapy dog for kids. They'll be doing that in the beginning of the summer. I know the schools also did therapy dogs last year, so I know some of the kids are, you know, getting used to stuff like that, being in the school system, and now we'll have that in the library as well. And not to forget, when you stop at the library, they do have more than just books. Some of the things that you could take out are museum tickets. And that goes for like the whole family. If you want to do a weekend, get passes for that. They have hotspots. They have laptops. They have cookware that you could borrow from the library. So it's not all about books. I know the library has become a great community spot for the kids as well as for adults with knitting classes and terrarium programs that they're starting up in May. So look out for fun things at the library. That's all I have from now, Mr. Mayor.
A place for you, a place for me, the local public library. Now, really, I'm dating myself. That correction hasn't been around in ages, sir.
All right, so with Parks and Rec, we have a number of events that are starting or have started for the spring. T-ball is underway. Flag football unfortunately got rained out last weekend, so they have opening day this upcoming weekend. Our tennis program has been a huge success. You know, people are really enjoying that. Softball, baseball, we're doing basketball fundamentals with Coach Walsh. And Zumba have been huge for our borough. Opening up for registration, Summer Rec, we finally got approval from the Board of Ed. We will be in the high school, so please be on the lookout as Summer Rec registration and flyers will be put out first thing tomorrow if it hasn't been put out today. We have basketball fundamentals for the upcoming summer. And as Councilwoman Mayor mentioned, cheerleading will be opening up for the upcoming season. Also upcoming, we have Zumba yoga and we will now be offering an art class as well to our residents. We are taking applications for our Summer Rec counselors, so if you have any high school-aged children that are interested in working with Summer Rec, it's a great experience, great resume builder. Please send them over to Terry and Jessica and they'll be happy to get them set up. And last but not least, Mayor, our firework requests to utilize the Board of Ed has been pulled. So we're just waiting on them to review our request. And once we have an update on when we can offer our firework event, I'll be sure to report back. But as of right now, we, we're not sure. So lots going on because of the bleachers just being deemed unsafe. So we're going to work some things out and hopefully get the event going. Well, we usually do it in August, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Seula?
Thank you. Just one thing, EDC, they're having a makeup meeting this Wednesday, the 3rd, 7:00 PM. And the meeting was moved to 55 Reed Street. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Ballas?
Yeah, just a couple upcoming events for the Board of Health. They will be hosting a blood drive on July 27th from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Office on Aging Building. There will be more information coming because usually what they do is they try to get somebody for an incentive, baseball tickets or tickets to some sporting event. But as that date gets closer, I'll, I'll give you more information on that. And back this year, the Frost on the Pumpkin, James Giannecchi Memorial 10K Road Race will take place Sunday, October 29th, rain or shine. It will start at Kuskay Park and end at Kuskay Park. You must, to register, you would go to www.raceforum.com/frost. The awards, of course, will go to the top female and male finishers, the three top, three, male and female in each category, each age category, which will be 14 and under, 15 to 19, 20 to 29, 30 to 39, 40 to 49, 60 to 69, 60 to 69, and then 70 and over. All the proceeds will benefit needs, special needs student activities. If you have any questions, you can call Michelle at 732-257-1999, extension 517. Culture and Arch, as firm, Arch Heritage Commission is firming up their Memorial Day Parade, which will be Monday, the 29th. If you still have a group that wants to march, it's, you still have time to do that. You can get in touch with me or with our Chair, Teresa Hutcheson. And South River Day is planned for Saturday, June 17th. They have sent out letters. They're getting quite a bit of feedback for sponsors and money, which is nice. And there's, you know, if anybody, any vendors or any talent want to take advantage and be part of it, they're more than welcome to, to take whoever wants to participate. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gindy.
You, Municipal Alliance, we had a meeting. We are not having a car show this year due to the Main Street being ripped up right around that time. But we are having a bike rodeo, which is going to be held on June 3rd, which is a Saturday. I believe the start time is going to be around 9:00 o'clock. As we get closer, I'll give you more details. In the last past week, I have had the opportunity to sit down with the Department of Public Works in regards of the different departments, such as electric as well as water. As of for electric, they are upgrading all your secondary wiring. We should be up and running and be done with the whole town within two months. They have also been replacing streetlights. They're up to about 1,300 that they have already replaced, which, each light, it's about 75% that you're saving on each light that's out there. The battery storage is up and working. The problem that we're going to be running into, which is going to be in the future to come sooner than later, is your electric cars. The more cars that come into us town, the more problems we're going to have with transformers. I know they're working on solutions as the, as it gets closer. As of for the water, as you all know, the brown water, which is not going to go away, this is a problem that has been around since 2013. I have logs upon logs of all these people that have been calling since then. The problem you have, like you said, or like they said, that when it comes down to tampering with the lines, you're actually, you're rattling a lot of stuff. I've had the opportunity in the last past week, two weeks, to call probably about nine different townships. This is a problem that affects every single town. The question is, how long? The question is, how long does it actually last? For example, Monroe, when they do their hydro flushing, their brown water exists usually within about a day, day and a half, and it goes away. We need to resolve this. I know that we're on it, and we're going to try to find different solutions. I also had the opportunity to reach out to New Jersey Tap as well. I'm trying to find different solutions as we go. Everybody is. This is a problem that affects everybody. My house is affected. My business on Whitehead Avenue is affected. This is something that we cannot hide. This is something that we need to face and face it hard. Hydro flushing is going to continue. I believe this week is an area number one. So, please bear with the situation. This hopefully will clear up, and we will find a solution. That's all I have.
All right, I'll save my comments for later. Opening this up to the public, you'll have 10 minutes. Please give your name and address. Come forward and speak.
John Hauserman, 211 Willett. Just referring back to the ordinance that we just did, again, you cannot repair a vehicle parked on any street in the borough. You can also not park commercial vehicles and vehicles of certain size on any street in the borough. That's what the ordinance says. I'm looking at the code book. So, the ordinance that you just did is going to put signs up, no parking on one side, where those vehicles shouldn't have been there on either side for as long as they have been there. So, I can only assume that those people will be only more confused as to what's going to happen, you know, once this ordinance takes effect. As I understood, Mr. Koch said you did the lining and cleaning projects in Highland Park and Lake Como and Spotswood. How did they get the funding?
I believe in Spotswood, they set aside capital money each.
Okay.
Some of money, but they slowly worked their way through the system. Highland Park was probably 25 years ago, and I'll tell you, I don't remember how they financed it, but it was five sections, I believe. Lake Como, the DEP, the USDA funded it. Two or three segments.
And you said we don't qualify for the USDA?
Back when I did it, there was a population cutoff, but they're having a session, I believe, and someone from my staff is going to participate, because I'm curious if there's any change in the population. It's meant for rural areas and such, but the population was acceptable in Lake Como. I know we're larger here, but I just thought it'd be wise to be aware if there's been any change in that.
So, what I understand, based on all discussions, we just need to put a plan together to do it, right? Okay. Question on the electric utility. I saw that the anticipated surplus, again, has been reduced by 50,000, as it's been done for a number of years. It's still 3 million and 50,000, so I mean technically that's going to take us 60 years to get that anticipated surplus down to zero. Is 50,000 enough?
As we are going along, bit by bit. If we can get more, I'd be all in favor. As Mr. Jones said, it's going to take forever.
Now, a question. I've heard now that the battery storage project is working. Is that correct?
It is up and operating.
Okay. And we have generated our first savings?
So, I've been told, yes.
So, you've been told? You're the mayor. I think you should know. Maybe, who would I ask to find out?
We'll talk to Mr. Zanga there.
Yeah, that's what I got too. First year savings are anticipated to be 940,000 less 425,000, and we pay for them to monitor the system, so the net savings will be 513,000 this year.
We have to pay them to run this operation? Is that, was that what we signed?
Plus you know, yeah, that was the bid. That was the bid that we were on.
No, I mean, when I was on the council, we had signed a contract. I didn't realize that we had to pay anything.
We went up the bid for it. This is part of it, because they have schematics to make sure. You have to pin down the right hour that this is going to be. So, when you have a 95-degree day, it could be 4:00, 5:00, 6:00. It could be any time, plus capacity and transmissions at all different hours. We can't figure that out, aren't I? This is something that a professional would need to do.
Well, I thought they were going to operate it and take their savings and pass on, you know, some of that to us.
We get 75% savings, they get 25%. Their 425 is to actually operate the battery to tell us.
I saw that. I was going to ask about that.
This is the right hour to do it.
So, when I see on the bill list, the AEP battery, those payments go to that company?
425 divided by 12.
So, I think, did you round that to 600,000 in this year's budget utilized?
Going over to this year's budget, correct?
Okay. So, as I understood it, the battery project was going to help us cut the demand charge, right, on our purchase of power costs?
Transmission and capacity, correct.
Transmission too, or just the capacity?
That's what it's cutting, is transmission and capacity.
And capacity, okay. So, I understood that as we were going to be able to reduce the cost, the purchase of power, so that we would be able to reduce the residents' electric bills. Are we not doing that now?
When we get the money.
No, you got the money. You put it in the budget.
I want to see it over a year, two-year time period.
It's in your budget. You put it there. You're already looking at it. You have it in your hands.
Yes.
You're going to spend it. You have it. So, you're not going to use it to lower the electric bills?
I want to see how this is going to operate over a year, two-year time period.
Okay.
Before we start spending money, because if this does not work out, we're going to have to raise the rates then.
Okay, so you're not going to lower the rates, but you are taking the money, and what are you spending it on this year?
Water improvements, park improvements, and like that service.
Okay, so you're taking money from the electric savings to pay road improvements, park improvements, and paying off debt and service. You have the money. It's not something to look at. You already got it. It's in our pocket, and we have decided not to reduce the rate. We've decided to spend it. That's just, I'm not accusing you of anything, but that's what we're doing.
Oh, no, 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 no. I love how you do it. I mean, you're so good at this, Mr. Hauserman.
But that's what we're doing. We spent it.
We are going to spend it on, what are we spending it on?
Road improvements.
That's right.
Park improvements.
That's, it's just a question.
Just what Mrs. Mayor, Councilwoman Mayor always complains about. That's what we need to do. That's what we're going to do.
Oh, so you're doing it for me?
Oh, yes, of course, of course.
Guys, this is my time. Please, credit me for a few seconds here.
You can answer him later.
From what I understood this to be, is we're essentially taking from pocket A and putting it in pocket B.
No.
When I asked Joe, the electric rate would be reduced by pennies.
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken.
Eight penny, 5%.
I actually went through and looked at it. One of the governing body, I'm not going to tell you how much you'd save, but you save, some would use a dollar a month, and the highest person, I think, was like $9 a month. So, the budget meeting, we decided that you can either take this and do improvements to the town, or if you drop the rate one penny, you save a dollar a month. It could be $12 a year for certain people. So, this, you'll actually have park improvements. You'll actually have road improvements. We're going to start paying off debt a little bit quicker then, instead of dragging it out and, you know, what the rates look like today. So, this is one of the decisions we made. Now, in the future, if this battery does what we plan on doing, you can then look at electric rates in the future. I would recommend.
Yeah.
It is an option in the future.
All I ask is, did you spend it? Or are you going to give it back? And you spent it. That's all I'm asking.
So, we spent it on the town?
You had mentioned that the last water rate increase was this 20...
16?
2020.
2020.
2020. But you had one in 2019 also, right? 20%? Can you pull it up, or? You have a laptop, right? I do. But I mean, you have a laptop, right?
Yeah, in the office.
Borough provided laptop. You also get an air card, don't you, so that you could use it mobily?
That's covered.
Yeah. So, you would think on the night of the budget, you could pull up numbers for a question. But I believe you did 20% in 2019 and 20%. And I know that, I think you mentioned at the first description of budget two meetings ago, that we would be looking at another water rate increase coming up.
There is a possibility, and especially if we're going to do cleaning and lining and a lot of capital work, I can almost anticipate there might be a water rate increase.
But again, in this particular budget, we don't have any money for cleaning, lining, and capital work like that.
Prior years, we put about 600,000 in capital in the budget. This year, we had a pullstone go back due to a lawsuit that's pending and due to hiring a water-driven operator. So, prior years, we did have 500, 600,000, but we have numerous watering breaks every year, numerous fire heights to repair, numerous valves to do, and I don't know if you see the cost on the bill list.
Every year, we have that, yes. We have that every year. So, the question, if you hire a water operator, will you be getting rid of Aggra and the other gentleman?
That is the discussion.
Okay. Did you tell those guys, or?
I think he'll still be around, right? Aren't I, you still need him for a little bit, because I mean, he runs it every year.
Yeah, the electrical guy, Aggra, will not, we will not pay Aggra for being the operator anymore. We'll be the consultant. We also absorb, absorbing from last year, a 35% water increase from East Brunswick.
From last year?
Yes.
Does that appear in the purchase of water for this year?
Yes.
Two years in a row, there's been a significant increase from East Brunswick.
Okay. And as I'm looking at it on the current budget page, it says that the increase this year is 5.74%?
1.1 million now, or it was 1,025 last year, so 75,000.
5.74%, okay.
Okay, so, yep, your 10 minutes is up. We will see you next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anyone else on first call, second call?
Take a motion to close?
No.
Mr. Luke wishes to come forward.
Okay.
Sorry.
Want to see him?
As y'all know, as y'all know, I'm Ronald Lou. Last name is L-O-U-Q-E, for the ones that, okay? I live on 85 Dowell Street. I do have a few things to say. First thing, this young man is right. About 100% of the people got the brown water, not everybody's calling. He's right about that. Because I didn't call, because I got this young man's website, Police Department, and when I see that come, oh, no reason to call. I know what's going on. All right? The second thing is, I need to say this. I'm very disappointed in this town. Cancel the chili contest, because nobody in this town will participate and help.
Nobody did. We're trying to bring it back.
I know that, but the point I'm making is, they did it and gave the money to all the kids and all that, and everything that's needed. But when the township don't help each other, I mean, that's sad. I had to say that. Now, the third thing, the real reason I come here, I want to look each one of you in the eye and ask, what is going on with the four-way stop sign on Virginia Street? Do I need to buy the signs myself and put them up myself? Where that lady died at?
Chief. Actually, there's an answer to that, Chief, if you'd take the microphone. And the problem, basically, he's going to tell you, is the problem with the size of Virginia.
For me, that's not a problem. Make it happen. We're going to spend millions of dollars on everything else, but when I see the ladies' people come to the post, fix the cross and everything on that post, it makes me wonder what is going on. I seen the police department presence. I seen the signs. All of a sudden, it's like it's gone. Well, I'm sorry, but I'm still here. What, I'm asking y'all, what are we going to do about this?
What, what signs did you see and then they were gone?
I'm asking, we was talking about the signs, four-way stop signs.
Right.
Now, all of a sudden, it's like, I don't see nothing no more.
Oh, he stopped talking about it?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Just my language.
Okay.
Okay? Chief, I'm sorry, your turn.
Well, you know, throughout the whole entire town, we have this issue. And we first, you know, with our program, with the slowdown in our town campaign, we started out in your area. So, there's only a certain amount of things that the police department can do. Ours, what we're looking at is enforcement, education. That's what we've been doing throughout the whole entire borough of South River. When it comes to four-way stops, we've been looking at different locations within town. We've been adding them little by little throughout the town. But I believe that street is more of an engineering issue that we have because of the width of the roadway. Now, we have looked at different avenues of trying to fix that by trying to do angled parking, trying to do curb stops, but that's something that has to be, that's above my idea of what to do there. The four-way stop is an issue because of the width of the roadway.
Correct.
You know, we could put four, we could put stop signs on every intersection that comes across Virginia Street, but when it comes to Virginia Street itself, that's an issue that we have that has to be rectified with engineering.
What about speed bumps about this tall? I mean, let's be real. I had a little guy today on an electric scooter, just cut right through everything, and I'm right there by my flower bed, I'm looking, oh, God, and he just, he's continuing on. Never stopped. But again, was no cars coming. What are we going to do? Wait for a kid to get killed? I'm asking, y'all to go to bed tonight, sleep on that. What are we going to do? Time, time for talk is cheap, right? Let's get it done. Let's just get it done. What we got to do? Make our yards bigger? So, we got a smaller street? I'm asking for help.
You just, you just pointed out a problem. And the problem is, even if you have the stop sign, if people aren't going to stop, what can any government do if people are just going to ignore it? I mean, you have, you talk about here, how about on Cam Avenue, where you got the four-way stop at Foothills Drive?
It's a drag race.
They don't, they don't even bother stopping there.
The kid I'm talking about was about 10 years old. Right? And honestly, he made a turn, never stopped, just kept going. And you're right. What does a four-way stop sign could do? It might stop the person coming this side of the street so that kid don't get hit.
Yeah.
You know, half a dozen of one, six of the other.
I also feel that on that street, a lot of homes don't have sidewalks, and maybe implementing sidewalks where kids do go on rather than be on the street, or even crosswalks, because there's, it's such a wide street. I think if a vehicle sees a crosswalk, it'll tend to slow down a little more than...
You brought up sidewalks.
Being down.
We probably got the only block in the whole town don't have them handicap, where you know, you go up like that.
What about the curbs?
Yes.
Back, I know, at one time, we talked about having to put sidewalks in there, but the houses were, there was something when they bought them that they didn't have to do it, and they wouldn't, they wouldn't do it, but they grandfathered in that they didn't have to put a sidewalk in.
I even say, like, when we look for grants or, you know...
But we had people that lived there that didn't want the sidewalks put in.
Well, the corner that I live on, all four corners have sidewalks, where I live at. All right? But I'm just saying, we putting stuff everywhere, but it's like, well, nobody don't say nothing. That's it. No. No, please. I'm just asking, please. You know, I don't want to have, I'm serious. Well, I got to buy the signs and put them up myself? I'm pretty good at it. With the electric ones, do what we got to do. Let's say if somebody's life...
But again, you have to have people paying attention to doing the stopping.
That's true.
They don't.
I can help that.
That's what happened down there.
When I cut my grass, I slowed many people down. What are you doing? When I cut my grass, I slowed many people down. What are you doing? You know what I mean? I got no problem with it. And Chief Teagan, I'll get take a good picture if you want me to take pictures of them license plates. But the key thing is, I don't really know if they go on fifty or forty. My picture wouldn't even hold up. But me, put that, put that, that, uh, that little red old thing, you put it in my, put it in my yard. I'll cut the grass around it. We need to do something. Let's please not wait. All right? I guess I'm, I'm about done now. Uh, but look, again, he's right. All right? Uh, Councilman O'Vella, how you said?
It's all right. It's all right.
Muchas gracias.
Obrigado.
Yes, Mr. Hutchinson.
Jim Hutchinson, thirty-eight Virginia Street. Tapping on to what Ron said. Yeah, it's been six months since the woman lost her life. And I don't want this to sound curt or anything, but I think when you had a, since we've had a fatality there, just to say that, well, even if we put a stop sign up, people may not obey that. I don't like that. I don't like that. The kid who ran the stop sign that ended up killing her in that accident, yeah, he didn't, he didn't obey that stop sign. But if we would have had a stop sign, a four-way stop, maybe she would have stopped, maybe. And then she could be here today. I'd just like to know, you know, if the process is that Virginia Street is too wide, which I can, I can understand that, chief, then, you know, maybe we need to take a look at the engineering of it. And if we have to have it as something that, as Ron stated, maybe our, our properties get bigger, that we actually bring them out into the street. So we have a, coming down Virginia Street, it actually tapers in so that we can put stop signs up. When I was here in October, I said, I wanted stop signs, I wanted flashing stop signs, I wanted, um, you know, ramps, I wanted everything out there. Just something, because again, the, we get the education, we get the presence. And when that presence is no longer there, people forget or they just don't obey. And now Virginia Street, just like Cam, just like Leonard Dean, just like almost every other street in the borough, has become the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. Just like Ron, I'm out there cutting my grass and there's times where it's, I have headphones on and I just, it's like, there goes Mario. Okay. The Andretti's are, are, again, on the road. I don't know what needs to be done. If there's got to be a plan, if there's got to be a traffic study, if there's got to be something. I would wholly support that we look at that because we owe it to that woman and her family. We owe it to them. A woman, a resident, one of our own, lost their life. It should not have happened. It should not have happened. It was preventable. And every day that I look at the telephone or the utility pole there on the corner that is still snapped at the top, right above where it says Darrell Street, and I see the memorial that's there from her family, and I try to tend to that for them, breaks my heart. It breaks my heart. We need to do something. We do. Transitioning to the water system. Mike did a really nice job explaining things, as did Chuck. And the one thing I want to stress is the cleaning and lining program and so forth. From my background at Middlesex Water Company, that is, it's a very, very successful program. It really is a good program. It certainly helps everything associated with aging pipes, water quality, again, just good clean water to the tap. It's a long process. It's long. Middlesex Water Company started cleaning and lining about almost forty years ago. And they're just getting to the end to start over again. It is not something that's going to happen in a month, in a year, or in five years. It takes a while. And it is very costly. It's very, very detailed. So it's not like just, they send something and they pull that cement, you know, they do the rotor ruder and they pull the cement, the Portland cement through the pipe. It's, you know, you're, you're basically shutting everybody's water off and connecting a bypass. So you're running almost like new lines into the, to homes. You're running it through maybe a, an outside spigot. In some cases, running it through a window. So it's, it's a very long, detailed process. And if you're doing that in the middle of summer and those lines are sitting in the roadway, your, uh, drinking water basically becomes pretty warm and sometimes hot. So there are negativities to that situation. Uh, they talked about the, the valve truck. So again, that it automatically opens and closes the valves. Yeah, some of these valves, which are for large pipes, it could be two hundred and some turns. That's a, a job for an individual or two individuals to do. And it's not just like, okay, we've reached two hundred and twenty-two turns, it's done. You might get to a hundred and fifty turns and all of a sudden, you got to start backing up again. You got to start over again. Because it's, the valve is old and it hasn't been exercised. It's a very labor-intensive process. And like they said, you start working on valves that are old, you can snap that, that nut. Uh, the valve breaks and now you got a valve that is not going to open, it's not going to close. And when they talked about valves, again, associated with making sure they work for fires and everything else. Well, it's not only that, but it's for water main brakes. Or if you're working on a fire hydrant to replace a fire hydrant, you want to isolate that line. You want to say, okay, we're going to be working in this particular area, you're going to isolate it. You want to isolate to the least number of impacted customers. And if you work your valves and you know which ones work, you know, okay, there's a valve there, there's a valve there, we're working here. It's going to affect twenty residences and one business. We're good. But if you don't work those valves, you don't know. And then instead of working on the main brake or working on the valve, or working on the hydrant, now you're trying to say, okay, how many other valves do we have to check out? So you're, you're working on something you shouldn't. You're spending time somewhere else. And maybe that shutdown area, instead of being twenty, now becomes two hundred and twenty. And now you're working with all different spurs up and down streets. There's a lot of stuff we need to do in town, the water system. And, uh, the treatment plant getting in, in, uh, good working order, that's the first step. It's like that elephant you got to eat. It's one bite at a time. This is a big elephant. But, uh, we, we definitely have to get something going. But it's, we're going in the right direction. Uh, but now we need to focus on the distribution system and making sure that we're doing the right things for that. But there's a lot, there's a lot of elements associated with this. But it is the right, in my, in my opinion, I think we should get off lime. We should go to the caustic material. That's the better process, in my opinion. But I think that's where we should be starting to. Lime, there's too much, like they said.
So when you say caustic, it doesn't mean that it's like acidic? That's just the word.
That's the wording of it, yeah.
Yes. Because I'm sure tomorrow on Facebook, they're going to say, we're going to put acid into the water. So no, that's why, that's why I'm careful about it. I like the fact that he talks about that, you know, we're already drinking the stuff. It's Coca-Cola and Pepsi.
And not only that, but I know the one statement made earlier today was, you know, the water is not healthy. If the water wasn't healthy, we'd have to shut down the system. We'd be out there making, you know, doing all kinds of samples all the time, which we do. But if there was an unhealthy situation, there would be notices going out stating, you can't drink the water, you have to boil the water. So it's not unhealthy. Maybe it doesn't look right, but it will settle. Realistically, it'll settle. It is not unhealthy. Okay? Let's make sure we get the right terminologies. It doesn't look good. Maybe your toilet's getting some rusted pots in it and maybe some laundry isn't good. But the bottom line is it's not going to hurt you if you drink it or cook with it or bathe with it. That's all decision-making, but it's not an unhealthy situation. We would be noted, we would be contacting people if that was the case. We have to do that. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else on first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mr. Seola. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. Moving on to the agenda, there are no mayoral appointments. We then come to our consent agenda, consent resolutions, and there are two extras that are on the list.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask that one sixty-six be read separate, please?
Yes, okay.
Whereas Resolution twenty-two-three-oh-one authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore, be it and is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions twenty-two-three-one-fifty-eight to twenty-two-three-one-seventy-two. One-fifty-eight, Resolution authorizing the purchase of air packs. One-fifty-nine, authorizing person-to-person transfer application of plenary retail consumption license. One-sixty, authorizing the appointment of Christina Giannocakis to dispatcher. One-sixty-one, authorizing the amended submission for the Middlesex County Enhanced Recycling Grant. One-sixty-two, authorize certain utility refunds. One-sixty-three, appointment of twenty-two-three Spring/Summer Recreation Department employees. One-sixty-four, appointment of Pedro Marquez as equipment operator. One-sixty-five, appointment of Jonathan Harris as summer help to the Department of Public Works. One-sixty-seven, support for suitability of cannabis business for Green Alchemy LLC. One-sixty-eight, support for suitability of cannabis business Cedar Fairmont Health Cultivators. One-sixty-nine, accept April tenth, twenty-twenty-three regular and executive session minutes. One-seventy, authorize the bills and claims list. One-seventy-one, appointment of Matthew Lataio as junior firefighter. One-seventy-two, appoint Kaya Lippman as cadet for the South River Fire Department.
Your pleasure on the resolutions.
Move the resolutions.
Resolutions have been moved by Mr. Seola.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes, with the abstentions to one-fifty-eight, one-seventy-one, one-seventy-two, and then as of for one-seventy, uh, twenty-three dash zero-one-zero-five-zero, as well as zero-zero-four-five-six.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes, with the abstention of one-fifty-eight, one-seventy-one, one-seventy-two. And for one-seventy would be twenty-three zero-zero-eight-two-zero, zero-one zero-one-one, zero-one zero-five-zero, zero-zero-nine-zero-five, and zero-zero-nine-zero-six.
And you said one-sixty-six, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution twenty-two-three-one-sixty-six, renovation authorizing daily field renovation services whereas there exists the need to renovate daily field.
Request to waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion has been made to waive the full reading by Mr. Olivera, seconded by Councilwoman Mira. The consent resolutions have been approved. We are reading this separately. Uh, may I have a, uh, motion on this resolution?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Gindy on the resolution.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Olivera. Discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. I believe we had an estimate for this, or we had somebody do a proposal for this that came in around seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um, I know this is on the agenda because we got, we're awarding it without competitive bidding. I'm just wondering why.
The expert, Mr. Lundenski?
Why we're awarding without competitive bidding?
Yeah, because we had a proposal for this exact project not too long ago and it came out to seventy-eight thousand. And this bid is fifty-one thousand.
I don't know if I can see the seventy-eight thousand.
We got a proposal done by the rec department, I believe, in December.
Yeah, this was two thou-
It was last year.
But it was.
It wasn't re-sodding the whole thing?
No, it was, it was seeding.
Re-sodding, new irrigation.
This is double what we had a proposal and that's why I'm asking.
Run correctly and then run for a while. Putting a little heat bill in there. So the sodding part of it, that's part of the project.
Okay.
We're going to crown the field so it drains better, so that we don't lose it for a number of days when it rains?
The project to me is great. I just saw a very big, different price range from what we initially got and what we're doing today. I'm just.
I don't know if it includes re-sodding. I don't know if that.
Now, the re-sodding, this is, was new because originally we were going to do seeding.
I don't remember the seventy-eight thousand dollar one yet, so this is re-sodding the whole entire field.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're putting Kentucky, uh, athletic grass, yeah, on this.
Kentucky bluegrass?
Athletic grass.
Derby's there Saturday. Derby's going to pick them up.
All right, that was my only question. I didn't, just saw a very, it's Kentucky bluegrass, I know.
That's what they use in the south.
It's very thick. I know a few homes that have it. It's a very thick, consistent grass. All right, that's just very expensive grass, but like to double the whole project, I, seventy-eight to one-fifty-one, that's.
And that wasn't re-sodding the whole thing. This is re-sodding the whole entire field.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to back up this project because I, daily field really desperately needs it. I know sometimes when we do it non-competitive, it does come out to be a little more expensive than if we did go out to bid for it. That's, or get quotes.
Supposedly we've done the bidding already, the call-ups and the state contracts and stuff, so we just piggyback off of them. They do the bidding already when they go out and get the call-up pricing, so we just join the call-up to.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Okay. Any further questions, discussions? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Resolution has been accepted.
I have one more consent resolution I wanted to abstain from, which I should have added, which was the number one-fifty-nine. Go ahead.
Okay. Please note in the record.
Yep.
Okay, there are none, uh, resolutions except for that one to have been read separately. Now we go for our governing body comments. Uh, since I began there, I'll begin with you, Mr. Gindy.
Uh, thank you. Um, I want to add, I know that we keep talking about the water. Uh, this is an issue that we will resolve in time. Uh, please bear with us. Uh, hydro, um, hydro flushing is taking place right now as we speak. Uh, our guys do a phenomenal job in a water plant. Uh, we are not outsourcing them. We are not outsourcing any of the DPW. They do a great, uh, service for this town. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. It's not easy. Just bear with us. Um, the weather is getting better. Please be careful. These kids are out and about. And, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mrs. Ballas?
Yeah, again, uh, I'd like to thank the DPW, the police, the fire. Um, the water problem, I, I know people firsthand that have the problem, that have been having their clothes ruined. Every, you know, I, I get it. So I, I hope as a, as a council, we'll come together and, and find a solution for it. And being that our next meeting is until after Mother's Day, this mother will wish everybody else a happy Mother's Day.
Thank you, Mr. Olivera.
First and foremost, again, I just want to thank the Budget Committee for working on the budget. I'm glad it took some professionals to come up here to, uh, to say what we've been saying all along and actually have a voice. Uh, but I do think once we get a plan for the water, it will, uh, really improve and we really can tact, attack in a, a certain way and be more proactive. In terms of what, uh, Councilwoman Ballas said, happy Mother's Day to everyone up here and all our professionals and all our borough residents. Um, and I know some concerns have been brought up about Fitz's, uh, Fitzpatrick Park. Uh, the way I explain it, it's a diamond in the rough. It's going to look beautiful, but it looks ugly right now. I think we all acknowledge that. There's a, a huge problem that Bruce's team is trying to figure out. Once we get that fixed, hopefully we'll be able to coordinate and get everything back up. But I do want to thank Agent, the DPW guys. I know they were working on getting rid of all the equipment that's out there. You will see a number of playgrounds coming down just because they're unsafe. Uh, next up, we have Bell Park. You know, the, there's a lot of jagged edges.
Volunteers Park.
Oh, sorry, Volunteers Park. Um, there's a lot of jagged edges. The, uh, the, uh, the bridge is also pretty much falling apart. You know, we're going to be proactive. We're going to try to address these concerns. Uh, but just please be patient with us. I know Fitz's is going to look great. Just, once we figure out what, what's causing all the water, we'll be able to address it. That's all I have, man.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, before I start, if I could ask Bruce, um, the wells are put in, how long do we wait now? The little.
Oh, that's all done. And I just got the report. I did an initial review of it. Tells me, actually veterans, seems like the groundwater elevation is about six feet below grade. I don't think that would preclude the destruction of an artificial turf field with drainage on it. Want to talk to a couple of the people in the office who routinely do turf fields and see if they agree with that. And the other one, the results were not as definitive as I would hope they would be. I'm going to have to give that a little more analysis to figure out what to do there, how to, how to do this. It's just groundwater coming off the hill. It's just groundwater coming off the hill. The natural groundwater in there is not as shallow as I thought it would be, so it's just sheeting. Have to give that some thought.
Okay.
There are actually some areas that drain well. I was like, what? Didn't make sense to me. So I want to see where those are plotted and, just got it, did an initial review. By next meeting, I hope to have more information for you.
Okay. Yeah, because it's been, and it's been a long time that that's been a flooded, muggy area. I think lately it's gotten worse. You know, it could be because, you know, our battery storage project is right there and there's not enough drainage, and we didn't think about stuff like that, but that's definitely, especially with the kids in that area, it's some, a problem that needs to be fixed.
I agree with everything you've said, but I only got involved with it a little while ago, you know, to have the work.
Okay.
I've been to that more.
Going back to what one of our residents had mentioned on Virginia Street, I have been seeing some of the seminars from the USDOT about the safe routes and, you know, simple ways to effectively reduce traffic and, and, you know, with the crosswalks and implementing bike trails and stuff like that, that we could easily get or apply for funding for to be able to make people more aware when they're on those roads, especially with the kids around. Virginia Street is packed with little kids, especially in the summertime, out there playing. One of my big concerns in all of South River is areas that don't have sidewalks. I think that's a big issue. I know the green team, when they implemented a few years back, I know we got rid of it because it was a concern. Sidewalks are important, especially in a small town where you have kids, where people walk, where there's a lot more vehicles, as we say, there's more and more vehicles every day on the road. Sidewalks, crosswalks, all these types of signages are little things that we can implement that could save, potentially save somebody from getting hurt. So I am going to see when the next USDOT seminar is, because they do a lot of the webinars, and they do assist in showing people how to apply for certain grants.
Well, the trust fund is out, I announced that in my reports, due July 1st. If you wanted to spend it on that street and come to consensus with what you'd like to do, we just put an application, and then by October or November, you'd be advised if you were going to get funded for it or not. So it's just coming to consensus on what you feel. I went out there the day after the council meeting, I went out there with a police officer and with Public Works Director, and we went right out there to look at it. So I have ideas, I'm sure everybody else has ideas, but we've got to decide if you want to direct the fund money there, and if so, how would you like to do it? What would you like to do? It's wide. Psychologically, it just induces you to go fast. Just the nature of it. It's a very wide road. Tighter road is psychologically, we all drive slower. One of the big problems you have there, just look at it.
Okay, definitely the start of a discussion for all of us.
Can I add something to yours?
Sure.
Could we put dividers in the middle?
Could you do a boulevard?
Yeah.
You could do a boulevard, it makes it harder to back out of the driveways. Keep that in mind. I thought about that for Rowden Street years ago, look pretty with a row of trees up the middle and such. And when you back out of your driveway, you have a more confined area. But that's an opportunity, we could, you know, if you want us to do a study and draw it up so you could see it, we could do that.
That might be a option.
Give you a proposal for that, do that.
Might be a big option, because you'd think about it.
I think you should maybe talk amongst yourselves and see what the different options are, and then, you know, we could put some sketches together for you, and you look at them in concert with the Chief Police and the Traffic Bureau, and see what you think is the most effective out there. There's different ways, but I understand the problem now, you've got a wide road, and where the stop sign's going to go is going to be way over here.
Not going to see it.
It's not out because it's so wide. Phil?
Okay, just more discussions that we should be having, possibly in our agenda sessions when we're here at meetings. Other than that, I just want to mention to everyone, the school is going through a lot of construction in all the schools towards the end of the year now, so just be careful. Educate your kids on what, where to go or not to go. They have everything blocked off for construction, I know they recently are pulling out their playground in the elementary school, and they'll be installing a new one. They actually did it a fun way where they let, they did a poll and let the kids decide what type of playground they were going to install, so it kind of made the kids feel like they were included in the, the idea of the playground for the elementary school. With the school area, I know there's always been all these issues with parking. We had a discussion with the Board of Education, that might be coming back with other issues regarding that in the future. I just want to say, I think a lot of the issues that we have around the school is more about education, educating people where we think they should go, where they shouldn't go. It's tedious, yes, but the more you say it, the more it implements in somebody's brain because the stuff that happens around the primary school in the morning, when three-year-olds and four-year-olds are getting dropped off, is messy. And we can't keep going back and forth with, the school does this, well, the borough does this, we really need to sit down and really come up with something. And I think it really starts with education. We educate and inform people the best way possible to do something. You know, everybody has a different opinion on how they come in the morning or in the afternoon to pick up their kid or drop off. I see some crazy things that happen by the schools, where, I don't know, you never know what's going around in somebody's head when they leave their vehicle in the middle of the road to go pick up their kid and then come back. When there's other cars on the road, and you don't even think about the danger of, you know, a kid jumping in your car and, and driving away. I mean, you don't know what could happen in these days. So I just think we really need to sit and educate in the school system because we know, as much as we want to say it's a walking district, it's difficult to get all these little kids in one area. So I just wanted to inform you guys, you know, we made some changes with the parking by the schools, and they're seeing more challenges with it, and they might come back with us to change it back. That was the input that I kind of received from our meeting with the Board of Education. So I just think, futuristically, because the school year is ending, we do need to sit down and really think about how we can educate and help people understand, you know, when school starts and it's 8:00 AM and you think you're, you need to get somewhere other than the school, then you shouldn't be driving by the school area because it's a madhouse. But that's all I have from the Board of Education. I just hope everybody has a very good Mother's Day. And we'll see you at the next meeting. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council President Seola?
Thank you. Just, what we have to keep in mind too, with our electric, that with more and more people getting EV cars, we're going to have to upgrade our electrical system. So eventually, all this money that we're going to be getting from the battery farm and, and anything extra coming in, is going to be going back into the infrastructure of the system to be able to handle all these EVs. Because once they set those in, I believe that what they had said was, right now, one transformer can handle four to five houses with the EV cars, one transformer will handle maybe two houses with the, with the charging stations. So it's something we have to keep in mind going in this future, because these EV cars, there's more and more of them on the road, and it's getting worse and worse. And the other thing is just Happy Mother's Day, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The Earth Day was, I think, a good success, first time, they did a good job, learned a lot as to how to get people to come there, the kids, the kids had a ball. So that'll be on for next year. You heard about the paper shredding event, you also heard about the recreation, take advantage of it, this is why you're paying your taxes. We've, have a very good director and assistant for our recreation department, so take advantage, they're doing a lot, so by all means, take part and enjoy. Of course, the kids are going to be out, they're going to want something to do, give them something to do. Some thoughts about what's gone on in the meeting, the people on the causeway are not going to be confused, they're not confused now, they know what they do is right, what is wrong, and summonses have been issued, both by the police and by the code enforcement, bit by bit, it's slowly being cleaned up. It's going to take time, as with anything, but slowly it will clean up. The electric, oh yes, the electric surplus, the things that we can do with it, yes, we can do a lot of things with it, but before anything is done, before any rates are lowered, we have to make sure that this battery project is going to work out. So in the meantime, parks need to be improved, road improvements, that's what will be said. If it doesn't come in next year, no harm, no foul, but that's the prudent thing to do. Last meeting, I talked about the electric utility. This time I did not talk about the water utility as I planned, is because you have heard an awful lot about the water utility and technical details. I hope you learned something about the water utility and the way that it works. A lot of work has been done, there's a lot more that has to be done, especially in the northwest part of town. More information will follow as the plan is put into effect and exactly what we're going to be doing. Part of, first part of the reforms of the water utility was going to be the plant that is finishing up, next step will be out there, and it's going to be in the northwest, because that's where, and again, when people complained, we know where the problems are, and when the problems are, then we can do something about it, we can then know where to look. So with that, I wish you all, the mothers and guardians, a Happy Mother's Day. Is there anything else to come before us? Hearing none?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it, we stand adjourned. Good night.